It's unfortunate for me because I play over there all the time tennis.
Anybody keeping track? It's a fun mountain. Yeah, yeah. It was the first day it was total one. It was just awful. I mean, you just barely could see. Just trying to navigate down, but then we skipped the next day because it was the same. And then Monday was blue. Let's do it.
We're ready. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this to order. Those speaking rather than the gallery speaking if we could this evening. Thank you. So, call to order the January ninth, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting. First item is a pledge of allegiance and will Commissioner Bartow please lead us?
Please stand with your right hand over your heart. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its existence. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item, roll call, staff.
All commissioners are present this evening.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is public comments and this is a time when we take public comment on items that are not on the agenda that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on with requests for continuances. Staff, are there any requests for continuances?
There are no requests for continuance.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, which is consent items. Item number one is the minutes of the December fifth, twenty 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 four, excuse me. Planning Commission meeting, would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from the December fifth meeting? Okay, seeing none. Commissioners? Will we get a motion or a second or a comment on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Turn it off. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion. I think Mr. Mosher may have had some with her edits.
With Mr. Mosher had some comments, we'll incorporate those as well. Okay, then let's go ahead and call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, next item. Next item is public hearing. This is item number two. This is Pacifica Christian High School use permit. PA two zero two three dash zero two three seven. Site location are multiple. It is one four nine nine Monrovia Avenue, eight eight three West fifteenth Street, one five one five Monrovia, and eight seven three through eight seven seven Production Place. Staff, do you have a presentation this evening?
Yes, thank you Chair Rosine. My name is Jocelyn Perez. I'm with the Planning Division. And the PowerPoint's not showing.
Give us a couple minutes, please.
Chair Rosine, if you can call a five-minute break while we get the technology side fixed.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take a quick recess. Five minutes.
Right, it's like the third house and it's like right there was actually nineteen.
Coming out of there. Coming out.
So, you know, yeah, so, I don't know, we just thought, we were just thinking, we're just. We're like weighing the options. It's like, well, like. Well, so if you move to somewhere like Fort Worth, would you want to go to Anderson through sixth grade and then? See, most likely six through seven.
Well, they built a new gym.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Which is super cool.
No, I talked to the guy.
Chair, we're ready.
And I'm like, hey, can we make sure? And it's like, it goes.
Staff, we ready? Yes, we are. Why don't, before we go ahead and get started, I'd like to ask everyone in the audience to please refrain from speaking. And then if you aren't able to do that, you can go ahead and exit. Thank you. So, staff, go ahead.
Right, thank you. So, this public hearing item is an amendment to Pacifica Christians' use permit. Pacifica Christian has operated a high school in the West Newport area for the past ten-plus years. Please click. Their main campus is on Monrovia Avenue. Click again. Their auxiliary campus is on West fifteenth Street. Click. They lease forty-five parking spaces from Coastline College. Click. And they lease the entire building at eight seventy-three to eight seventy-seven Production Place and have twenty-three off-site parking spaces in that location. Next slide, please. There are a variety of schools in the area, however, the predominant land use is residential. The notable exception is the industrial properties along Production Place there. Next slide. So, Pacifica operates pursuant to the conditional use permit filed as PA twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seventy-eight. That use permit was approved by the Planning Commission in August of twenty twenty-three and it established a maximum enrollment, maximum number of staff, required parking spaces, and school term and hours. There are no changes proposed to those operational characteristics as part of this application. Next slide. So, this project is in regards to the facility on Production Place. That site, as part of the current use permit, is approved for warehousing, administrative office space for Pacifica staff, and as off-site parking. It is in the industrial zoning district where schools are not allowed, so a condition of approval was included in the current use permit prohibiting students from using or accessing that site. And that was done with the intention to prevent any school instruction from occurring on Production Place. So, to prevent PE classes or any kind of instruction from staff. Next slide, please. Pacifica is requesting to amend that condition so the facility can be used as an athletic training facility as well as administrative office space for staff. So, the majority of this site on Production Place will be used for student athletes to come over to the facility outside of school hours and have access to batting cages, free weights, open space where they can do calisthenics and stretching. They'll be essentially conditioning for student athletes. I'd like to highlight that there will be no team practices here. There are no games, no special events. And there will still be no school instruction here as this is in the industrial zone where schools are not allowed. The athletic training facility functions similarly to a studio land use, which is permitted by right in the industrial zone. Next slide, please. So, students will continue to use their assigned spaces, whether that's at the main campus, the auxiliary campus, or Coastline College, and they will walk to Production Place with a staff member. The walk will be, worst-case scenario, up to a third of a mile. And because no students are parking at Production Place, Production Place will still serve its original purpose of providing off-site parking for Pacifica Christian staff. Next slide. So, this project updates condition of approval number sixteen to update the allowed uses for Production Place. It carries over all relevant conditions of approval from the current use permit and it adds additional conditions of approval related to the remodeling of Production Place. Staff has two changes to the resolution. First is in regards to condition of approval number one. Staff received a comment from Mr. Mosher pointing out that that condition was written in a way that was a little confusing as it referenced a site plan and floor plan dated with this approval. Staff has updated that condition to continue using the floor plan for Pacifica Christians' High School, the campus, and these plans for Production Place. And Production Place has a lot line, so prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant will need to apply for and record a certificate of compliance. So, next slide, please. With that, staff is recommending approval of the amendment, so next steps would be to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and adopt the resolution. I'd like to point out that the recommendation in the staff report has the PA number slightly off. It says PA twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eighty-seven and it should be PA twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seventy-eight. So, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions and we have representatives of the applicant available for questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions, staff? All right, seeing none. Starting with on my left, commissioners, any ex parte communication?
None.
None for myself?
None.
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 Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Good evening Chair Rosine, members of the Planning Commission. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, representing Pacifica Christian School tonight. I'd like to thank staff for working with us on this application. I think Ms. Perez prepared a very thorough application for you. We are requesting one change to one condition. This is for after-hours use by students, not during school day. I have not prepared a formal presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, so then there's a, there are some revisions.
Thank you Chair Rosine. We have reviewed the conditions of approval. We are in full agreement with them as amended and just shown to you.
As amended, okay. Thank you. That was my question. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mrs. Schaffner. Does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this item? Mr. Mosher?
Chair Rosine and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. As I have mentioned, I think in the past, I'm a member of the city's general plan advisory committee, but I'm speaking here as an individual. And my comment, as I tried to explain in writing, has to do with the consistency of this with our general plan. My understanding is that we do reserve areas of the city for particular purposes. And as was pointed out in the staff report, in the general plan, this particular area is reserved for industrial uses. And while the general plan allows ancillary uses to those industrial uses, as simply worthy as it may be, does not seem to be supporting or ancillary to those industrial uses that are in that district. It's supporting a totally different use. And at least to me, that is not consistent with the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Would anyone else like to speak in regard to this item? All right, seeing none. I think the applicant, if you'd like to make any comments. Okay, no. So, staff, do you have any comments for the record?
Our zoning code implements the general plan and a studio land use is allowed by right, so it's an allowed use.
Thank you. Then we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it to the Commission for Discussion and Action. Commissioners? Comments?
I think this is a relatively straightforward modification. I think it agrees with the general plan. I have no problem with it and I'm happy to make a motion as it sits on the face of it to support this item, so I'll make that motion.
And include the additional conditions as?
And include the additional conditions. That's correct.
Great. You have a second?
I'd second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations to the applicant. Okay. Next item. This is item number three, TTC Newporter. This is PA two zero two four dash zero zero nine one. The site location is both one 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 and one one zero seven Jamboree Road. Staff, do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Yes, we have a presentation. Thank you Chair Rosine and commissioners. My name is Jenny Tran and I'm the planner for this project, for the TTC Newporter project located at one 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 Jamboree Road and eleven oh seven Jamboree Road. Next slide, please. The site is located, highlighted in orange here, which is the TTC Newporter at one 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 Jamboree Road. It also includes parking located on the Hyatt Regency Hotel property in the light purple color at eleven oh seven Jamboree Road. And to the north is the Palisades Tennis Club, highlighted in yellow at one one seven one Jamboree Road. The TTC Newporter and the Hyatt Regency Hotel are under the same ownership and the Palisades Tennis Club is under a separate ownership. Next slide, please. To start off with some background, in October of nineteen seventy-three, use permit one six nine seven was approved for the John Wayne Tennis Club and additionally, re-subdivision number four one three was approved to subdivide that parcel into parcel one and parcel two as shown on the right. The John Wayne Tennis Club would be across parcel one and parcel two. And then in May of nineteen seventy-four, the tennis club subdivision for parcel one and two was recorded. There is an error in the resolution that states the subdivision was approved in nineteen seventy-four, but a red line will be made on the resolution to state the parcel map was recorded in nineteen seventy-four. A condition of approval was included that required both parcel one and parcel two to operate as a single development for the John Wayne Tennis Club as one tennis club for the duration of the lease agreement. This lease agreement has since expired. And after the expiration of that lease agreement in August twenty twenty-three, a staff approval was approved for parcel two to operate a tennis club independently of parcel one. And today, the two parcels operate independently of each other. Next slide. So, this project tonight is for a conditional use permit, which would restripe the six tennis courts on parcel two into twenty-two pickleball courts. It does include minor improvements to the surface parking lot on the Hyatt Hotel property to implement the required parking. And this property is within the Parks and Recreation Zoning District, which for the commercial recreation and entertainment land use, requires approval of the conditional use permit. No other amendments to the zoning code or general plan are required to implement the project. Additionally, a coastal development permit is required as the project is for intensification of use in the coastal zone. And finally, a traffic study is required as the project generates a net increase of over three hundred average daily trips. Next slide. The required parking looks at three different uses. First is the TTC Newporter, which is the pickleball court project. A portion of the required parking will be located on the TTC Newporter property and a portion of the required parking will be located on the Hyatt Hotel property. As though two properties are under the same ownership, this is not considered off-site parking. The second use is the Palisades Tennis Club, where all of their parking is located on the TTC Newporter property. In this situation, their parking is considered off-site parking. And finally, the Hyatt Regency Hotel will have other parking provided on the hotel property. The required parking is inclusive of all hotel amenities, including the golf course. With all the required parking, the provided parking between the hotel property and the TTC Newporter property, there is a surplus of provided parking. Slide. This map shows what was previously discussed as far as the parking location. So, shaded in green is the TTC Newporter property, where their parking is partially located on the property and partially located on the hotel property. Whereas the Palisades Tennis Club parking is completely located on the TTC Newporter property and the hotel property provides all of its own parking. Next slide. We received several correspondences relating to concerns from possible noise and traffic that this project would generate. So, a noise study was prepared by LSA Associates. This noise study analyzed noise impacts from the increase in traffic and from pickleball operations. And it ultimately concluded that at full capacity of all twenty-two pickleball courts, the project would not create an increase in decibels perceptible to the human ear at the hotel and also at the residents across Jamboree Road. Next slide. Additionally, a traffic study was also prepared by LSA Associates, where this traffic study analyzed seven different intersections to evaluate the project impacts to the level of service of each of those seven intersections. And this study concluded that the project would meet the level of service required under the traffic basing ordinance. Next slide. The existing tennis court. The existing tennis court is allowed access to the restroom facilities on the Hyatt Hotel property located at those two restroom locations shown here. With the new pickleball courts, they will also have access to these restroom facilities. This was reviewed by the building department and found that access and use of these restrooms complies with both the building code and the plumbing code. Next slide, please. And to clarify some of the operation at the Palisades Tennis Club. So the Palisades Tennis Club will continue to operate in compliance with that use, the previous use permit, Use Permit Number UP 1697, separately from the TTC Newporter. So this project will not supersede the existing use permit. Both uses will operate under their own separate use permits. Second, all parking for the Palisades Tennis Club is provided on Parcel 2, as shown in the previous slides. And all rights afforded to the Palisades Tennis Club under Use Permit Number UP 1697 shall continue. Next slide, please. And a couple of relevant conditions of approval included in the resolution is that the pickleball club members will have access to the restroom facilities at the Hyatt Regency Hotel, as previously mentioned. Any special events shall be coordinated with the Hyatt Regency Hotel to avoid issues with parking. If the operator slash owner no longer authorizes parking for the Palisades, they must notify the city, and the city will work with the Palisades to seek approval of some sort of parking adjustment. And finally, if the TTC Newporter and the Hyatt Regency Hotel become under separate ownership, an off-site parking agreement will now be required to authorize parking for the TTC Newporter on the Hyatt Regency Hotel property. Next slide. Staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from CEQA under Class 32 and Class 31, and to adopt this resolution approving the conditional use permit, coastal development permit, and traffic study with that minor red line, as previously mentioned. Thank you, commissioners. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is available for questions. The applicant or the consultant that prepared the noise and traffic study is also available for any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Mr. Saleen?
Thank you. Jenny, thank you for the presentation. Just can you go back to the restroom slide for a second? I just have a quick question.
That's fine, that's fine. So the restroom over on the right side, is that, does that, is there a paved walkway there, or do they have to cross the golf course?
I believe that walkway is paved.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Mr. Langford?
Thank you, Chair Rosin. Ms. Tran, thank you. General plan. It appears to me the two parcels, Palisades, TTC Newporter, are collectively considered anomaly 51 with its own development limit. So I was curious how we reconcile this going forward with now two entities sharing anomaly 51.
Yes, that's correct. So the Palisades property and the TTC Newporter property are both under anomaly 51. It's not uncommon for different properties to be under the same anomaly with one collective square footage. In this case, the anomaly allows for 20,000 square feet. And right now, there is the clubhouse on the Palisades property at about 8,000 square feet. This anomaly doesn't necessarily limit which properties get with X amount of square footage. So that square footage is more of a first-come, first-served basis.
Any other commissioner comments? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and go to our ex parte communications, starting on my left. Commissioner Bartov?
I was contacted by the applicant.
I did speak with the representative, the applicant, and the operator for TTC.
I met with the operator for TTC.
I spoke with the operator for TTC.
I spoke with the operator.
And then? I spoke with the operator and their representative.
All right, thank you. Then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And does the applicant have a presentation?
Good evening and thank you. My name is Robert Struthers. I'm a minority owner of the applicant. And first of all, I'd like to thank the staff for their 16, 17 months of hard work, helping us work through things, answering our questions, helping us answer yours. It's been a pleasure dealing with you, and thank you. Secondly, I'd like to thank the commission for your time this evening. And we're going to try and be brief. We don't have a real full presentation to make. I'm a resident of Newport Beach, and despite my obvious conflict, being a part-owner of the club, I am very much in favor of a project and a facility which is sorely needed in Newport. Something that is more affordable, something that is inclusive, and something I think will be a big plus for pickleball fans in Newport. On that note, we have a number of our members of TTC and pickleball fans present. And I hope, to your delight, and those of you who hope to watch some of the football game, we're going to keep it very, very brief. We've asked a single member to speak on behalf of the others, rather than troop 65 others here to talk to you. Again, we have representatives of the operator, our counsel, and professional advisors here to answer any other questions that you might have relating to the proposal. And I'll sit down.
Quickly, before you sit down, have you reviewed the conditions of approval and agree with them?
I have, and I do.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. And thank you for having that discussion with our audience this evening. So before we move on into the audience, I'd like to just sort of set some ground rules to keep it focused this evening, and it sounds like we want to do that. If you would like to speak, keep your comments to three minutes or less. And then maybe just by a show of hands, we could go ahead and see those that are in favor. Great. And any opposed? Okay, so there are a couple. So what we're going to do is allow the applicant to come forward and speak, and then additionally, allow those others. If we could keep the gallery from excessive noise, or any noise frankly, that would be very much appreciated as well. If you need to talk amongst yourselves, please feel free to go outside. So we'll go ahead and start based on that. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this item?
Good evening, commissioners, and good evening to the audience. My name is Camille Vascas. I'm an attorney and a partner at Shepherd Mullen here in the Orange County office. I'm also a proud resident of Newport Beach, this lovely city. And I just want to tell you, this is spontaneous. I did not know until about 30 minutes ago that I was going to be addressing you. So I'm going to speak from my heart. I'm a new member of the pickleball community, and I'm going to share with you a story. A few months ago, I came back to Corona Del Mar in Newport Beach. I just bought a home here. And Valentina and Sean kindly invited me to come to the club and experience one of their famous Friday nights. And I didn't know what to expect, in fact, and the women in the audience will appreciate this. I was wearing kitten heels. So I was really not prepared for what I was about to walk into. Despite my inappropriate attire for the evening, I walked into a community of families and friends and work colleagues that were all gathered around doing something that's good for your health, good for your soul. And I was so encouraged by what I saw that I turned to Sean and Valentina, and I was like, I have to be a member. There's just something infectious about this community. And I think today especially, with what the tragedy that we have seen in Los Angeles County with the wildfires, I think that places like TTC, places like pickleball communities are exactly that. They're communities. They're places for people to gather. They're places for neighbors to get to know one another and to be able to rely on them when the worst things happen. And we're seeing that in our own backyard. I have friends that have lost everything, and I'm sure a lot of people in this room are probably feeling something about what we've all witnessed. So I encourage you, I urge you, to do the right thing and pass this commission. This has been many, many, many months in the making. Sean and Valentina are the best of our community, and this community deserves this place that will continue to be somewhere where we could gather and be proud to be part of this wonderful city. So with that, I urge you to please vote in the right way. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, guys. Thank you so much, staff. Thank you all for being here. So I'm Bud Masterpalo. I've played tennis at the Palisades for about, well, I've played tennis for 20 years, about 15 years on and off at the Palisades, and now I'm a pickleball guy. But I'm looking at this more from a real estate standpoint. I've been selling real estate for about a decade in Newport Beach. I love the community. I live in Corona Del Mar with my partner, the beautiful Joanna. And so I'm a huge fan, not only because it's fun and competitive, but like she was saying, it's literally reconnected us to the community and the community. I've lived in the flower streets for about 10 years now, and I sit on my corner making phone calls every day, and I see people walk by the neighborhood. And it wasn't until I went over to the pickleball club that I realized half of the people that I live with are there. And I actually got to know them. We have conversations, and that's where I made real connections, just like you were saying. That's actually happened, so that's pretty cool. But I also realized from a real estate standpoint, we're here and we're dealing with noise, and there's people that live in the community. Across the street, at Sea Island, it's a great community. They've got a couple tennis courts there, a couple pools. I believe the values are going to go up in that community. Right now, we have a pair of doctors that moved in. They're coming from San Diego. One of them's working at Hoag. And they literally, as one of the criteria to search for a property, they said, we want to be next to pickleball courts or next to a club. So it's literally becoming part of real estate for us. So I don't know what's going to happen with this. I hope it hap, I hope we get the pickleball courts, because, you know, I love it, it's a big fan, it's great for our community. I honestly think it's going to help the values of all these properties. In addition to that community, I mean, I would, that's how I would sell Sea Island. In addition, I mean, there's Jamboree, right? It's a six-lane highway. It's not, it's not a small road. So hopefully, the noise won't affect them at all. You know, there's a parking lot, six lanes, it's a, it's a big deal. So let's see. I mean, just like Villa Point, Harbor Cove, Granville, Meridian, I would, I would use it as an asset when selling real estate, that you're, you've got pickleball across the street. It's a big deal. Listen, these guys have been put through the noise studies, the traffic studies, the density studies, they've passed everything. Let's see, what else can I say here? I do, I love Sean and Valentina and the whole crew. We've, we've met a lot of people. So my, my main point is just as a Realtor, coming from, looking at this thing from just a real estate standpoint, I think it's going to help the community.
Your mic, your mic.
Before you go ahead and speak, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. Let's refrain from clapping, if you could, please. Next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Robert O'Hill. I am the, my entity is the landlord at Newport Beach Country Club Plan Community District. Sean became the tenant at, or actually, Sean's entity became the tenant at the golf, I'm sorry, at the tennis club subarea over 10 years ago. And he took over for two failed prior tenants. Immediately, there was a great deal of excitement. He brought major tennis to the facility. And then when COVID hit, he introduced pickleball, and everything blew up. The excitement, it's a very social, engaging sport. People were able to get outside and talk to people and make friends. And it was amazing to see what happened. He has about 120 charity tournaments a year that produces a great deal of benefit to our community and to Orange County, and even beyond. It's one of the largest, if not the largest, pickleball clubs in the nation. And through all of that, he's managed to make his neighbors happy. So the people dining outside at Newport Beach Country Club are less than a football field away. Granville is about 50 feet away. Those, if you sit at the, outside at Newport Beach Country Club, you cannot hear pickleball. I know a lot of people are incredulous about that, but you can be my guest at dinner or lunch, and it is absolutely a fact. So to prove how well he's done with his neighbors, I believe the Planning Commission got a letter from Kevin Martin, who's the president of Newport Beach Country Club. And I hope you got my letter. I know that there's probably some people that live in Sea Island that may be concerned. Sometimes those fears and concerns are exaggerated in their mind. I hope that they consider that there is a major highway, six lanes, Jamboree Road, between them and the pickleball club in addition to a parking lot. And I live in Emerald Bay. I grew up in Newport Beach. Now I'm growing up in Emerald Bay. And behind my home is Pacifico Highway. And I can tell you that at 12 o'clock at night, when some motorcycle gang comes by, or somebody with a Ferrari or a Lamborghini come by, it wakes me up. On the other hand, this area, I am really sure that the pickleball club will end up having lots of members from Sea Island. So I encourage you to approve it, and I just want to tell you that this is a conditional use permit, which means that if there's a problem in the future, the Planning Commission has some recourse. Thank you very much. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Eileen Lenson. I am a member at TTC. And I want to say that something, I've been there about three and a half years now. And one of the significant things that I've found, to my surprise, was that Sean really has created a sense of community at the place. And I don't use that term "community" very lightly. You know, my intention of, of joining TTC was just to have a place that I could play twice a week. That was all I wanted to do. But slowly, the sense of community and sense of belonging that he's created, I experienced it as well. And over and over, I've seen it in other members. I've seen, and they've shared with me, their experiences of coming in there with fears of being rejected, and met instead with feelings of, experiences of inclusiveness. And they've been able to shed their feelings of maybe not being good enough. You know, we all kind of have that little voice inside our head that says, maybe you're not good enough, you're joining a club, will you be able to belong? But instead, people have been so welcoming them. And for example, if someone's having difficulty with a skill, a serve or whatever, others will take them aside, say, let me spend 15 minutes with you and tell you, or let me share with you my, my racket, maybe this is going to help you. So they teach them a new skill, and they, and they grow, and they feel more confident about themselves. And also, it's the sense of community that Sean has developed there has really spread, and people have a genuine human feeling of support for one another. You'll see it, they share each other's joys. Someone had a grandchild. Someone's spouse is terminally ill or has died. There will be condolence cards that are passed around, and people are there. Someone recently, I know, had surgery, and several of us made meals for her. And then there was a group of people who, people who took her out walking so she could help come, get better, and then get back to the pickleball courts. So it's a place where members care about each other. So Sean's felt, created a place that really, people feel safe to be themselves and to, to grow personally, as well as their skills in pickleball. He's provided some structure there, so it- personally, as well as their skills in pickleball. He's provided some structure there, so it reduces tension. Can imagine with the number of, of people that's belonged there, how conflict could grow. But instead, he, whenever there's conflict, he addresses it, and you see an increase in gratitude that people tend to have. He has, provides structure and guidance and expectations, and yet, he gives space for people to grow, for example, and to have their individuality, like to develop the ladders that are important in, 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 in the group. And some ladders have even upwards of 50 members. So, it's very significant about the inclusiveness here. I see that since being there, Sean has grown the, not only the membership, but the infrastructure, and an increase in philanthropic activities, which was previously addressed. So, thank you very much. I think that must be my timer. And my husband's gonna start using a timer at home now. I can assure that. But I just want to end by saying that I think that, I believe that Sean would be able to create this same atmosphere wherever he went. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker, please.
Good evening, staff and commissioners. Thank you for your time. I just want to tell my supportive membership, members, family, Artisan family, thank you very much for your support. I think we've said what we want to say, and would love to now get to the other side and answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Don't normally speak at these, so please bear with me. My name's Christine Sabares, longtime resident of Newport Beach for many decades, and a resident of Sea Island across the street, property owner. I actually was not aware of this meeting until just last minute. And I know I received my notice about this hearing during the holidays. And I did manage to make it, even though today's a national day of mourning for our president, and all federal buildings are closed. And personally, I know a lot of us have family, friends, colleagues, and coworkers, sorry, impacted by the devastation in LA and the fires that may end up being the worst fire disaster in our country. But here we are tonight, so I'll try and make it very brief. I'm all for pickleball. I think it's great. I just haven't had enough time to take a look at what was on the website for the city. And I know a lot of my neighbors, we've got, I believe, 132 units. We're not aware. So, I'm just wondering, I know you guys all mentioned, which of you have spoken with the applicants? Have anybody, has anybody called a meeting with the residents directly impacted at Sea Island across the street?
Ma'am, this is just a topic of public comment. So, if you can go ahead and just provide your comment, and then if there's a opportunity to respond.
Oh, I thought because they were asked if they'd spoken with anybody, I heard the applicant, but...
So, they are reporting ex parte communications. However, this is a moment to provide public comment.
Okay. So, given today's events that are extraordinary, I'm just wondering if, I guess the notice said today's the only day you can inquire about a concern. I do have a concern. I noticed on the parking that they'll be coordinated with the Hyatt, but it really also should include the dunes, which has large events, and they keep increasing the number of events. And that's why we get parking backed up on Jamboree. I'm sure you're well aware, we have lethal accident, car accidents right on Jamboree in front of Sea Island every single year, including a pedestrian within the last year. And what happens is the traffic gets so backed up, they, they spread out into other lanes. It's like a freeway, all of a sudden, coming to a sudden halt. So, I didn't have a chance to explore that. My other concern is, I don't know, but I, I'm concerned if there's building that will be going up. It says improvements on parking. I'm hoping there's not building that will construct up, because I know we personally paid, you know, in addition to six figures to have a view, a view of the water. And I don't know what those improvements include. I saw a reference to a website. When I looked at the documents at the City of Newport Beach, it said, "Go to ERC dot something," but it wasn't actually a website. I couldn't find the information. I didn't see it. I was hoping whatever illustrations would be posted on the City of Newport Beach. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just would like the opportunity to be able to have a concern. But I'm all for pickleball. I think it's great.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Rosen, members of the Planning Commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. As Commissioner Langford pointed out, the description in the draft resolution of the general plan designation of these properties, the tennis properties as PR and the hotel property as CV, is not quite complete, because when you look at the actual general plan, both of those have anomaly numbers attached to them, which modifies that designation. And I would additionally point out that one looks at that new housing element that we have. Both of the tennis properties, parcel one and parcel two, are both separately identified as housing opportunity sites. So, that is also a part of their current general plan designation. The main comment I would make, which I tried to make in writing, I have real trouble understanding how this action can procedurally be taken, creating a new use permit for one parcel without modifying the existing use permit, which covers two parcels. Exactly how use permits were understood in 1973, whether they ran with the land or for the length of a lease, I do not know. We don't seem to have a document that's actually a definite use permit, but you have a attachment to the staff report here on handwritten, page 148, that lays out the conditions of what I think are the use permit. And then, when the Planning Commission in 1973 heard this, they made some condition, some changes to the conditions of approval, but apparently it was still this understanding that it was a unified operation. And so, UP 1697, if it's not modified, we'll continue to say that it consists of the 16 tennis courts, which would all be on that property. Seems like a problem. And we heard that they need 60 parking spaces. This needs, it says that they need 78. So, will they now be out of compliance? I don't know. I really think you need to modify both permits, and you need the permission of the other property owner to make that, especially since you're putting in new conditions on that property owner as to finding parking. And as to the noise operation, I note that the noise impact analysis was contracted by the applicant. I really think the city lacks the expertise to evaluate whether it is correct or not. And I think the condition of approval, number 19, which says that the applicant will comply with chapter 1026, Community Noise Ordinance, and other applicable conditions, hopefully includes also chapter 1028, which prohibits anybody from producing noise that is annoying to a person of reasonable sensitivity, because when this is built, it might do that, either to people at the hotel or across the street. We really don't know, because the noise impact analysis, in my opinion, is not adequate. And so, I hope that if the noise is annoying, that that condition will allow the Community Development Department to require mitigation measures like sound blankets or whatever. And I hope it's clear that they would be subject to that if the noise is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Are there any other speakers this evening?
My name is Fred Hunter, and I live at 23 Bay Cove Lane here in Newport Beach. I've lived there 12 years with my wife, Jeannie. If you look at my unit, which is the ground unit, and you look straight across, I look right at the tennis club. Friday nights, if you go westbound on Jamboree, the traffic is all the way backed up to the police station. Yeah. Environment impact reports, I don't know if you guys, I don't know who TSA and Associates is. I was mayor of Anaheim for eight years. I understand when we have a group that gets together that says, "Yes, this is what we should do," but you're impacting 100, 150 residents of Sea Island. It's not only the noise. It's not only the traffic. It's the financial. There's three legs to the stool: financial, traffic, and you guys, by planning and voting for this, are affecting me financially and all the persons that live in Sea Island. I can tell you stories after stories of when they would have real estate. People would come in, and they'd be at a top unit, and they'd look across the street, and they'd walk back out, because they wouldn't buy the unit. The traffic on Jamboree, in my 12 years that I've lived there, has been exponentially worse and worse. As I came here this evening, I drove down PCH and turned left on Avocaro, and there's a big sign that says, flashing, "Keep the noise down, or you're going to be ticketed." I have not, in 12 years, seen that sign on Jamboree, saying that we're going to slow down the noise on Jamboree. I urge you, I urge you to vote no on this. I'm telling you, as Anaheim former police officer, as a lawyer for 40 years, and a mayor of Anaheim, eight years, there'll be consequences.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Janet Sanders, and I also live in Sea Island. And I have to say first that I think pickleball is a wonderful sport. I understand everything you're saying about it. But I don't think this is the location for the club. And we have quite a few reasons. But in Sea Island, pickleball is a lot louder than tennis. And I have to tell you, I hear the tennis courts. I hear the ball hit, and it's day and night, but especially at night. The sound carries up. That court, all those courts sit down. Jamboree comes up, then the hill, then Sea Island. So, Sea Island is highly impacted by any noise that goes on on those courts. So, for that's one main reason that I think it will be detrimental to the people of Sea Island. And I can witness it, because from my home, if you want to come here, you'll hear the tennis courts, even though I'm separated with traffic, which I hear. So, the tra, oh, that's the other issue. And then, I want to read a petition we have done. I just want to say something about the 300 additional cars. I drive up Jamboree in the morning often, around 8 o'clock, 8:30. And the students at Corona del Mar, the high school, are going up there, and they are filling the two left turn traffic lanes. And then, they're coming in from the other lanes, trying to get in. And I'm amazed there weren't more accidents. But you increase that traffic there, and that is after 8 o'clock. You're causing a lot of potential accidents and injuries to young people. And Jamboree, with 300 extra, from PCH all the way down Irvine, will be impacted. But now, I would like to read, we in Sea Island, we do oppose this, and we have a petition that was presented. And it's that we, we do oppose the development of the 22 pickle courts. And we feel that the residents at Island Lagoon, adjacent residents, and Hyatt guests will be impacted adversely from the extreme noise level, from the rec, the ball hitting that paddle or racket that is used. It's really loud. It's, anyway, we think it will be that. The project will greatly increase the noise and traffic on Jamboree, as well as potentially cause more accidents in this area of Jamboree. In addition, the pickleball noise will be a deterrent for Newport Beach community residents to select the Hyatt Newporter for future booking for out-of-town guests. I want to thank you for all you're doing, and just feel that, please think of all of us at Sea Island. You do feel that we don't hear the noise, but I can be a witness, and all of us will hear it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers in the audience this evening?
The other thing is, with the pickleball, they have tournaments, which are great fun. But it's more of a carnival-like atmosphere with loud music and loud noise. And that is only going to impact all of our noise, especially on weekends. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments this evening? Okay, does the applicant wish to respond? Okay, no? And staff, do you have any comments or clarifications for the record?
I just want to address the question about new structures. So, the project does not include any new structures. The improvements are for an area that was designed as valley parking. So, they'll be removing a planter and restriping it to accommodate self-parking versus valley parking. But no new structures, it's just restriping the parking lot.
Thank you for that clarification. Then, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring us back to the commission for discussion and action. Commissioners?
Chair Rosen, would you like me to just, one more additional?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
With respect to the SEQA exemption and whether that was applicable, we do, as Ms. Tran pointed out, there were two studies that were performed, one related to traffic, one related to noise. And we determined based on that, that the infill exemption applied without a contrary study that shows otherwise. I think that you can faithfully rely on those.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we're, we're done with the public hearing right now.
The public hearing's closed.
I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed, sir.
The public hearing...
Every one of you from being on the Planning Commission.
Public hearing's closed, sir.
Thank you. All right, we're, we're moving on here. Commissioners, discussion and action?
I, I have a question for staff.
Please.
Staff, do you have expertise on staff to evaluate a noise study?
Good evening, Commissioner Elmore. Yes, so, staff regularly reviews technical reports that come in. So, as we prepare environmental impact reports, or NDEX, or other environmental clearance documents, they do get reviewed through various city departments and staff. And so, staff did review the technical reports that were prepared, and we believe they're prepared correctly.
Yeah, okay. That's my only question to staff.
Commissioners, any other comments?
I'll, I'll make a comment and open up the, you know. Look, I, I appreciate everyone's passion for pickleball. As a planning commissioner, it's something we've come to be accustomed to. So, pickleball, you guys are fantastic, and congrats on, on that passion and that sport. And so, we are a planning commission. We are a body that makes determinations upon land use, conditional use permits, things of that nature. We're not a city council, a city council. We don't make decisions based upon popular opinion, on votes, on what everybody thinks. It's, it's very simple for us. It's a land use matter, and it comes down to what fits with the code, staff's interpretation. And then, we find that the interpretation of what's, of the application, we, we make an agreement that it aligns with the charter and the city code. That's, that's this body's job. We trust in our engineers. We trust in staff's ability to interpret the reports. I've been on this planning commission for five, six years, and I can tell you that staff is very competent at understanding, diving into traffic studies, noise reports, and everything else. On the face of this application, to me, it's relatively very straightforward. This comes down to parking, noise. The noises, the, the noise analysis is very straightforward. The traffic study complies. The noise analysis complies. Parking complies. So, for those factors, and us doing our job, I'm very simply confident that this fits in the box of what we're supposed to do, is our job technically. And, you know, I'm happy to, y'all be supportive of it. It's straightforward.
Thank you, Commissioner Elmore. Think, very well said. Commissioners?
Couple of words, just kind of thinking out loud, the, I'm, I'm confident in all of those things. My reservations are, what I am uncomfortable with a little bit is kind of the technical aspect, just because it's coming to us. We're the planning commission. There's use permits, and stuff's supposed to last for potentially decades or longer. So, it's... and stuff's supposed to last for potentially decades or longer. So it's kind of the rights between the adjacent property owner and this property, and kind of splitting the use permit, that I'm still trying to kind of figure out in my own head, how it's going to last, you know, the test of time. Mr. Mosher brought it up, you know, I think we all kind of saw it when we went through the staff report, and we're trying to figure out how this is going to work. When you look up use permits and look up properties, how they come up, you know, if I was looking up the Palisades use permit, it would come up with the old one, and then it would take a little bit of like footnotes and figuring out to like get to what they really do, what they are required to have nowadays. So I don't like that part, and maybe that's something that we can figure out on the staff end after, you know, we decide what we want to do here. And I know the direction that staff gets from the planning commission, from city council, is always, we want to get stuff done in Newport Beach, and we want there to be rights of the property owners, and we want to keep things going. So I certainly appreciate that, and that's the direction that I like to see. And I don't like, so in some ways, we are willing to cut some corners, but in other places, I just don't want it to look like it's sloppy. And so, and maybe I'm over, maybe I'm, you know, thinking too much about that, and maybe that's something that we could figure out with staff, is this old use permit will continue to be the use permit that Palisades continues to operate under, but it's going to be incomplete without some kind of, you know, asterisk or something. So making that available to, in perpetuity, you know, a decade from now, if the property owner, who, I didn't, I didn't see a letter from the property owner for or against. And so he has rights, he or she has rights, to do what they want to do in the future. So I want to make sure that it's easy for them, and it doesn't kind of cloud their title in case they want to sell it, develop it, lease it, whatever it might be. So that's where my head goes with all this stuff. You know, I like the use, pickleball, all that stuff is great. So those are kind of my thoughts. I just wanted to kind of get on the record as we, you know, figure this out.
Chair O'Zine, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Just I wanted to go ahead and speak to Commissioner Langford's concern that he raised. I think that these, first of all, we've had a staff approval that have allowed parcel one to operate independently of parcel two for over a year now, and we haven't seen any conflict with those two use permits operating independently. This will be the conversion from tennis to pickleball. Nonetheless, I still think that that will not create additional conflicts. There's still two recreational uses. They rely upon the Hyatt property for their parking. As Ms. Tran made clear, nothing will change in terms of Palisades' ability to operate under the use permit that they have existing. One of the additional conditions of approval requires the new operator to obtain special event permits. So again, to the extent that Palisades has their existing special events, those will continue to be allowed, and TTC will be required to obtain special event permits. So I do continue to believe that there will not become conflicts between these approvals. And as Mr. O'Hill pointed out, you know, there is always opportunity to bring items back and to make amendments as appropriate, but I nonetheless don't think that will be necessary.
Thank you. And I would just add to that, that if there was any kind of change in terms of what Palisades is looking to do in the future, there's, that's a whole new application, a whole new process. So I don't really see that being an issue here, and appreciate the fact that we have an operator that's worked out an agreement with their neighbors and have figured out a way to make that work. And that seems like a viable way to handle this. So, you know, I'm comfortable with the way this is written and by staff and their recommendation.
Kind of on the same issue, last time this property came up, it was quite heated and passionate pickleball versus tennis discussion. And I'm glad to see that, I think there's a less anxiety on that regard. But particularly, I just, to talk about the history, because I know we've kind of talked around it, but, you know, this was originally a single development. There was requirements to operate together. And I think that, that, at the last, again, the last time this came up, there was a direct conflict there, and there was no agreement on anything. And I personally, I'm excited to look at this and see where before, if I remember correctly, they had people parking down by the dunes to go to the Palisades last time we discussed this property. And to see that block of parking right next to the Palisades, which really was what was conceived by that use permit, to see us back there, I think is really great. So to see that, that cooperation, and I didn't, I didn't see a direct support or against, but I don't see a roomful of people from Palisades here. And that's, you know, a good sign, at least from my perspective. But again, to your point, the use permit issue, I feel where before, it was, it was really severed. And obviously, you know, from my perspective, I think I said so last time, these properties shouldn't have been separated. I don't understand how they were separated, but that's a long time ago, and that's, that's, that's all behind us. And I'm excited to see a lot more cooperation happening now. So that's, I find it real encouraging.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartow. Would anyone like to entertain a motion, or any more comments? Please.
There's no more comments. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Elmore, that I think this is pretty straightforward. I applaud the operator and the applicant for the effort that they put in on the noise study and the traffic study, and agree that the city is capable of reviewing those documents. Having said that, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution PC 2025-002, and all the related conditions.
Do we have a second? May I make a comment?
Yeah. You know, piggybacking on everyone else, it's disappointing. These were sold separately. A little foresight, could have seen conflict years ahead. I'm, I want to thank the applicant for clearing a lot of things up. I feel like the last time, it was pretty cloudy on what was actually being represented. And the access parking, kind of solving the issues that we were feeling were big problems then. So appreciate coming back with a cleaner application and, you know, coming back properly. But I'm happy to second this motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, why don't we take a quick break while we're waiting?
Folks, if we could take it outside, please. Ladies and gentlemen, if we could start moving outside. Mr. O'Hill, outside. Okay, folks, if we could please move it outside. We have a meeting to run. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a meeting to run.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a meeting to run, please. Thank you. Congratulations. Excuse us. If we could take this outside, please. Thank you.
Okay, I think we can continue along now. Our next item is motions for reconsideration? Are there any motions for reconsideration this evening? All right, seeing none. Our next item is a report by the Community Development Director, or items that the Planning Commission would like placed on the future agenda.
It's good evening, Jaime Murillo, Deputy Director again. Just a real quick update. So for the next Planning Commission meeting on January 23rd, we have two items. One's an office conversion for medical, and then we have some potential amendments to the housing opportunity overlay. And then we will be counseling the February 6th Planning Commission.
Thank you. And then, I guess, does anyone from the audience wish to comment on these items?
Oh, is the, oh, sorry. Is the housing overlay amendments, is that a presentation or something that we're going to be asked to vote on?
It'll be an item that you'll be asked to make a recommendation to the city council.
Question? Any other questions, or from the audience, on this item?
Not this item, but...
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Make a quick comment. My understanding, this is Commissioner Bartow's final meeting with us. And having served with you for the last year, year and a half, I want to say thank you. We've really appreciated your support. You've been fantastic, Commissioner. I wish you would stick around, because you're solid, solid like a rock. But we understand that there are other, other factors involved, and, and the city should be grateful to have you as part of the team. And I just want to say thank you and congratulations to your family.
Thank you. Yeah, to that point, I was going to save it for the request for absence. But I don't mean to move too far out of order, but it's true. Following the election of my, for the record, beautiful wife, they, in order to prevent conflicts moving forward, leaving the Planning Commission, it has been a, just a huge pleasure to serve with you guys. And really, I'm sure you're going to find a great person to replace me, but I'll miss the, the fun of kind of confronting interesting issues and, and trying to make the city a better place. So thanks for serving with me, and thank you especially to the staff for keeping us on, on task. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your service, and we'll see you in the pickleball courts.
Almost certainly not.
Are there any requests for excused absences this evening? All right, and seeing none, we are adjourned.